Good evening, welcome. Selectmen are going to call the meeting to order and Vogel?
Don Colley is present.
Sullisio is present. And we're helping host a pre-town meeting is what we're calling it. And I'm going to sit back and watch the show. John Barrett is here. Adam Coster is here. He's our town council and our real town council.[42.46][42.46](Laughter) And Jim Cryder. And the three of them are going to take us through the budget and take us through the town meeting book.
Excellent. Thank you, Madam Chair. I've done this in another community before and it's meant to be a very informal, very relaxed kind of a walk-through of what the warrant looks like, what the budget book looks like. So it's really meant to encourage you to raise a hand or just ask a question if you see something. And John, particularly you, because once this meeting kicks off, it's all you. This is, you are the captain, my captain, so.
Of this meeting?
Not this one.
Oh, okay.
No, the town.
This is practice.[85.11][85.11](Laughter)
The real town meeting, Mark.
So particularly if there are things that you see about any of the way things are lined up or laid out. It's a live document on the screen that can still be edited between now and next week. So we'll just very briefly click through the book. It's up online, so you can spend as much time as you'd like to with it by logging on. We'll have a hard copy at the Clerk's office, a hard copy at the Selectmen's office, and one over at the library and one at the senior center. So there'll be reference copies that people can sit with and thumb through if they'd like. If somebody feels particularly strongly about having a personal copy of this 165-page document, God bless you and we'll make you one. But we will have them available for the night of town meeting. So given that, yes, John?
Well, one question about that, I guess, just to lead off, just to make sure I'm clear about it, is when people come to the town meeting, they're going to have a copy of the warrant and a copy of the budget, right? If not, the whole budget book.
That's actually something to discuss, I think. You know, part of the thing that we have heard in the short time that I've been here is there's not enough information and not enough transparency. So what I had been thinking was that we were going to copy this book for the number of attendees that are there, which is, as someone said last night, is overkill because not everybody is going to want to drill down into the data tables. Not everybody's going to like the pretty pictures and the graphs. But there are going to be some in the group that are going to like one or the other of those things. So in an effort at making it available across the board for everybody, no matter what their preference is, we're going to make the whole book.
I think if you look through it, if we go through it, John, you'll see it's set up pretty much like the warrant is.
Right.
But there's also additional information.
I just, my recollection from last year at least is that there was a lot of confusion between going back and forth from the, there was an abstract kind of budget and then there was the full budget.
No, this is all the same.
So.
This is now a full exposed line item budget that everybody wanted. It has, instead of a separate sheet with the votes of the FinCom that people had to flip back and forth between, the votes are now rolled right into the, right in the warrant. So you'll see after each article, there'll be the vote of the Select Board, the FinCom, and for the zoning articles, or the planning board. So it is all one document that flows.
Okay, so just to, for example, Article One, maybe we should just go through it, but.
He doesn't look like he has the same.
I don't have the most recent one, I think, because I printed this out, I think, yesterday. And I didn't print out the whole thing.
Yeah.
I scanned through it.
And he said formatted in the portrait versus landscape.
Right. And because that's what I'm used to. And I, you know, changing times, I guess, oh temporis moris. But I guess I would prefer that that style, like, you call it tablet?
Landscape.
Regular?
Oh, you mean the portrait.
As opposed to the landscape.
Portrait, yeah.
Portrait. And I would think, and if I look at the old ones, that's the.
But the figures may not be correct.
Okay.
But the book is there.
All right, well, that, you know, that's, I think, better. It just makes it a little bit easier for people to work.
All the same.
I mean, it's, I know that one problem I had is this one looks a lot different because the, at least the numbers look a lot bigger.
Yeah, they are.
Than this one. My fading eyesight. That would be better, I think.
Let's go through it and see how you like it.
Yeah, yeah, I just figured those are more logistical or mechanical issues or questions that I had.
But if we go through it and there's other suggestions or whatever, then we can still make some modifications.
Okay. In front of the book, I had a request from somebody who shall not be named, John Barrett, to use the gazebo. So we have the pretty picture of the gazebo up here. We then get to the table of contents. And things that are bold are the things that are going to be the action items for the night, the special town meeting warrant, annual town meeting warrant, and then revenue and expenditure projections. But everything is keyed to this index. So it starts out with just the community profile. Shows a 50-year population trend. Description of the style of government under the Home Rule Charter with a link to the charter. And we get to an org chart. There are also going to be a number of kind of cutesy things placed throughout. There's a, "Did you know that the current New Beginnings United Methodist Church originally served as the town hall? Built in 1770. Town meeting and other town events were held there until 1894." So just kind of neat little facts that I think are important to keep in everybody's vision. This is, when you open the book, you'll see it spread out across. This just shows one page of the org chart. That'd be the second page. And this one reflects what you had asked to be done, John, when we met over a year ago regarding the elected boards and commissions. So you and I spent a little bit of time after that meeting and I took some notes down on the chart. So this should be satisfying those concerns.
Um, yeah, I noticed this, and not to belabor it, but on the Cemetery and Parks Commission, I thought we had a different conclusion there because I think that Cemetery and Parks still views us as not just policy setting for the Cemetery and Parks Department. And that seems to be implied here. And I didn't have time to pull out my notes from our meeting, Jim, but.
Sure.
And I'm not sure how we resolved it, whether it was a dotted line and a straight line. But I mean, although we have to spend a lot of time on that, I'll double check my notes. But I think that we did have the discussion about the, you know, at least my view, Cemetery and Parks Board is more than just a policy-setting board. I mean, we're providing oversight. Now, I think the thing that you pointed out is that when we can't meet and give directions about things that we want to see done, that's when they would defer to you, I think, you know, that Roger would contact you and say, "Okay, we've got this situation. What do I do?" Because as a board, we can't convene unless it's, maybe it's an emergency, we could, but normally we're not going to. But in terms of general, you know, oversight, in terms of administration generally, I think the board would still be doing that.
For parks and cemetery business.
Right, oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think what this is meant to reflect in, and if it misses the mark that strongly, then we can make edits between now and the floor of town meeting. But what this is meant to reflect is anything that is green and parks or cemetery-related, you know, the actual, the stewardship, I believe the statute talks about you having superintendents of, you know, the parks and the cemeteries, both statutes that Cemetery and Parks Commissions are independently created under.
Right.
Anything that has to do with those is yours. And anything that has to do with the administration of the town organization in terms of personnel and, you know, for instance, the position that you have is a union position. So those types of things. And I think we've received some clarification on that in a parallel matter with the water department recently, where the, I don't know if you've read the court's decision on the motion and cross-motion for summary judgment in the water department case came out last week, I think. Actually, no, a month ago, right? March 26th.
No, I hadn't seen that.
Yeah, I'll forward you a copy of that. But that basically stands for the proposition that the, basically if it's technical and wet, it's the water commission's business and nobody else's. If it's administrative, which can include personnel, legal, and policy, that it runs to the Select Board.
Okay.
So, but again, this, this is.
I'd like to see that decision, but.
Yeah.
Yeah. Not to disrespect you folks, but I think this has been an issue that's been agitated for quite some time, not to do it now.
Really? Do you notice that?
Yeah. So I'd be interested to read the case.
Excellent. So we can pull your notes if you can.
You guys can visit each other.
Yeah, we can work this.
Right.
And work through that.
If a dot needs to be made solid for the purpose of your satisfaction until we have a better consensus amongst the parties, then I would defer to making you happy earlier.
That's gratifying, Jim.
Notice I didn't say.
And maybe not so happy later, but that's okay.
I didn't say perpetuity, I said initial. So this is just meant to.
I understand.
Finally get something down.
Right, right, yeah, and that's fine, it's good.
Okay. So then we get into municipal department descriptions. So we have, each department will show a mission statement, a department description, and a personnel summary table, which shows 18, 19, and 20 full-time equivalent employees, and if there are any changes, what the explanation is. So you'll see accounting, assessors, Board of Health, Board of Selectmen, Town Administrator, Building Department, Cemetery and Parks, Council on Aging. Council on Aging was a big table, so they get a separate page, check it up. Facilities, Fire EMS, Highway, IT, Land Use, Police, Public Library, Recreation, Town Clerk, Treasure Collector, Water Department. Then we get to the page that lists the elected boards, commissions, committees, and positions, and appointed boards, commissions, and committees. And there we get to a voter's guide to town meeting.
Oh, look who it is.
Ah, look at that guy. And this is the version that I took yours, John, that you sent back to me, and accept all, intract changes, anything that you had as comments or concerns. So this is that document with all of your comments rolled in. But I'd encourage you to check it against, against your, your version, too. So this just basically is an introduction and the history of town meeting, what the practices are, and then basically who the cast of characters are that, if you're sitting in the audience, who are all these people up on the stage and to the bottom left of the stage, and what are their roles? And then it gets into some parliamentary procedure stuff, discusses what it's about, how a meeting starts, what a discussion is, and what a motion is. If you want to amend a motion, how you do it. If you want to take the vote, how you move a question, how to take no action. If you're confused and you have a question about something that's informational, how to rise to a point of information or a point of privilege. If you think that there's something that is outside of the rules, you can stand to a point of order. How reconsiderers handle here in Townsend. And then taking a vote, voice vote, standing counted vote, or a secret ballot vote. And the emphasis being the large word centered on the near bottom of the page, that this is an open town meeting. The operative word is it's open. Everybody that's a registered voter can come. And it's strongly encouraged that you do because more power literally to those that do. They're going to be the ones setting the policy. A little thing about the bat on Spalding. It's lore, I'm sure, but it's.
It's upbeat, too, sure.
It's fun.
No, you know, I think, from what I caught of that, correct me if I'm wrong, though, people weren't feuding that Spaldings wanted to give a school to the town twice the size.
Twice the size, right.
And the people didn't want it because they thought it was going to be too expensive to maintain. admittedly, this is like the beginning of the depression. And so they, yeah.
I heard the bats in the belfry.
Yeah, these people are batty, and so they sent the bat to be on the, for the thing.
So there you go. That actually comes out of an old Sun article that I found, John.
Okay.
Some of the other stuff that I had earlier referenced in those little tidbits, it's a really cool history of Townsend that is, I think, 1678 to 1878. Sartell, maybe?
Sartell, yeah, Ithaca.
Nice. It was a nice book. So some of that, some of that comes from there. So here we have glossary of town meeting and municipal finance terms. Again, those of us that do this, say these things and throw them around as though everybody should understand them, and we don't realize that it's its own language sometimes. It is like a foreign language. So this gives a peek at what the terms are that we are generally tossing around. A little nod out to E.B. White. Cleverly wording that he was a local taxpayer, not that he was ever a resident, but he was in fact a taxpayer on the white farm, so. Then we get to the warrant. So this is where, if people want to start, you just, you know, page 43 in the book is where the business of the night begins. All the other stuff is, you know, prelude, everything after is, is.
What I'll do is just announce to people that fact. I mean, you know, describe it, you know, that this is the thing and the main action items will start on page 43. So I'm flipping around, hopefully they'll.
Yep. And again, you'll see, you know, the votes are baked right into each article now.
Oh, yeah.
So you'll see, you know, "Selectmen recommend, Finance Committee recommend." So each article as you go through, so the special is relatively brief, it's a five, five article special. We get through the special and we're into the annual. So again, it's sequential pages. We start out with the appointments and reports, which is the usual customary stuff. We then go to the revolving articles. And again, those are, those are the opportunity for departments to have dedicated funds into which they can receive revenue and from which they can spend revenue for specifically defined purposes and at no greater amount than is defined by this article without it being part of the regular operating budget. So if, for instance, the fire department utilizes, you know, some consumable materials during an oil spill, they can replenish those materials from their revolving fund revenue. And then when the insurance company pays back, that can go right back into the revolving fund. So it just allows them to be a little bit more nimble than we otherwise are meeting once a year for finances. So we get to the operating budget, which is trying to hear what people said last year. The Board of Selectmen were very specific in saying that they preferred the fully exploded budget that lists everything from people to paperclips. So what you'll see here is the article itself, "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate a transfer from available funds," with an asterisk. The asterisk then shows the available funds, which has been the way I have seen it since before I got here and have carried it on since. "Such sums that may be necessary to defray the charges and expenses of the town for fiscal year 2020 pursuant to a detailed budget totaling $23,275,121. We're taking action in relation thereto." So submitted by the Board of Selectmen, Finance Committee, Town Administrator. Description, usually customary town budget for fiscal year 2020 begins July 1st, 2019. As is customary, you'll be voting the total for each of the following functional segments with asterisks shown below and as shown in the black with the asterisks beginning on page 49 and ending on page 80 of this book. So the functional segments, again, general government, public safety, education, streets and highways, solid waste, human services, culture and recreation, debt service, and insurance. We then get into the.
Yeah.
Yep.
On that, it says Finance Committee recommended, but we did not.
I'm going to show you in a minute. You get, you get billing on the, the actual budget itself.
All right.
I can add it there as well as a footnote, but.
The amount is different than what's on the warrant, the total amount. The warrant has $0.95.
Is it, so it's about four grand different or so?
Um, what's that? I can't read that number.
Twenty-five, two, seventy, twenty-three, two-seventy-five, one-twenty-one?
No, $0.95 at the end.
Oh, so $0.95 instead of one-twenty-one?
One-twenty-one.
So we're $25 different?
Yeah, I don't know if that makes a difference or anything, if that's something you should change or.
Yeah, we'll, we'll cut $5 from your budget and.
I think I can handle that. Twenty-five dollars, how's that? Yeah, there you go. We'll split, we'll.
We'll make it work.
Split it.
No, that's a good catch, though, because obviously you don't, you don't want to put an article out seeking a greater, a higher number of dollars than that which was posted, even though I would argue that it's the minimums on a $23 million budget, but good catch.
Yeah.
So then we, we'll get to the.
Want to draw in the accounting department, too? How about if we have a job for you in the accounting department, too? There you go. I like money.
So the, the Town Administrator Budget Memo, which is a requirement under the Charter, I'd encourage people to read it at home, at their leisure, but we won't be spending a lot of time with it on the floor, I don't expect. It just hits the high points of what's different in this year's budget. Then we get to the budget. You'll note that there's, after Finance Committee up top, there's an asterisk in it, says, "Accept lines 703 and 748." So it's a consensus budget. Everything is agreed upon between the Selectman, the Finance Committee, and the Town Administrator, with the exception of those two line items within the budget that the Finance Committee does not agree with. So I thought that was a fair way to say it without having to say the Finance Committee doesn't support the budget or didn't agree to the budget, you know?
Um, okay. Lines are different on here.
I'm sorry?
Those lines are different. This says, "Accept lines 714, 715."
Right. Because some things were changed around today, but this is what's going to be handed out. There are only three copies of how many got posted of that.
Yeah, five.
Right, so those, those aren't being handed out.
Okay.
What's being handed out is the one that's up here today.
But isn't this the actual official, what's posted?
It is. And all that's going to be different is the page number.
Okay.
The articles, the article numbers haven't changed. Yeah, it's just, just the page number. We had some things that got removed last night, the Charter Commissions, the foregot removed, another thing up front got changed. John, you were going to say something?
Well, I just wondered, except lines 703 here and 748, that's referring to the number at the file left?
Yep, line number on the file left.
Away, away from that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We can make that clear.
We're referring to the department number thing there.
Excellent. Yep, so, you know, I would suggest that we read across the top for people as we're starting. Left column is line number, the next is department name, account name. The fiscal 17, as we finished, 18, as we finished, 19, we're obviously not finished yet, but that's what was approved. And then the 20 requested, and then the 20 recommended. Most of those will be the same, but there are some variations which you'll see as we go along. And then the variance in dollars and in percentage. Then notes if there are any things of particular interest that people should have their attention drawn to. So this is a little different than we did last year, John, because this, well, this was available last year. We were working off of the department.
Summary.
Yeah, personnel and expense.
Right.
Personnel and expense.
Right.
So you had some people looking at that version and others looking at the detailed version and flipping back and forth. So this year, there is no truncated or omnibus version of the budget.
Right.
There's this.
Right.
It's the only budget document that's out and about on the floor.
Okay.
So as we go through, and again, this is your bailiwick, John, the way I've seen you do it is, you know, go by department and ask if there's a hold, if anybody has anything they want to talk about by each segment.
Right. Initially, I think the way we've done it is we go to the total general government.
Right.
Review the whole total general government section, give people a chance to review it and see if anyone has any questions. And I did get some complaints that, from people generally, that we went through it too fast.
Mm-hmm.
So I'm going to take our time, you know, and try to make sure everybody, you know, has a chance to read it.
Would you think that, do you think that just looking at each department section, that that lets people say, "All right, like Board of Selectmen is first, so I'll pick that one." Jim, could you just go back?
Sure.
Well, you mean to just call it out?
I think, Jim, I think that's what you do, right?
Yeah, just call it out.
Well, I think I know, generally just do general government, you know?
But that, I think, is why people feel rushed because they're trying to absorb those who didn't look at it ahead of time.
I could do it just by, by the different departments.
Yeah, by department, like Board of Selectmen, long pause.
You know.
Accountant, long pause.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, yeah.
Particularly because it's far more expansive this year. So people are going to want, if they haven't seen it in advance, they're going to want to spend a little time looking at it. So again, the budget is laid out the same exact way as it was last year. I'm flying through here, don't get dizzy. There we go. So we get to the bottom, the bottom of the budget, and there is the grand total. So again, the dark bars are the functional segments, and then the grand total, as was called out on that chart under the, the actual article that gets moved. Do we have any questions on how that's laid out?
One question, I guess, since there were two.
Yep, go back to them.
Things that FinCom did not recommend.
Yep.
Will you folks speak to that at the meeting or are you going to volunteer that or wait for someone to?
I thought it was going to be up there, but. Well, but when, but people are going to want to hear what you have to say on the things that you're not recommending. So for example, what's one of them?
Line 703, right there, second from the bottom.
So 703, when we get to that section and John says, "Is there anybody that wants to say anything?" You know, FinCom, did you, you have?
That would be your cue, I think.
Yeah. And FinCom says, "Yeah."
You're prompting, I'll prompt, but.
And this is.
FinCom, you have anything to say?
And this was what we, what we decided as a committee, and this is why. You know, and people can agree with it or disagree.
And the other one that the Finance Committee have an issue with is right there on 748, which is the expenses for the flag committee. So when we get to American Flag Committee, which is a new department this year, a new budget, that would be where the FinCom would jump in again and explain your thinking there.
We're going to need some more.
So but for those two lines, it's all come by a.
Yeah.
All right. And we get to the Article 6 after the budget, which is just the legal requirement that the town votes have set the town clerk salary. It's been voted in the budget, appropriated up above, but it does need to be, as a standable matter, set. Then get to the fiscal 20 Water Enterprise Department budget. And you'll see the article, Article 7, as it's written, submitted by the Board of Water Commissioners with a description about what it is. The budget for the Water Enterprise Fund, which carries on to the top of that third The numbers are exactly as they were submitted by the Board of Water Commissioners, which I should say is the same within the general operating budget. Elected boards and commissions' budgets were, were rolled directly as they were submitted. If there was something that was submitted that was noteworthy, I included in the note column what was noteworthy about it. So for instance, while we look at, at this one, and it's consistent with what's in the Cemetery and Parks as well, you know, there's a salary that the commission voted, and the note is, is just subject to the negotiations of the union because the position is a union position and we can't just fund positions as we see fit without it being negotiated at the table.
Right.
So the funding will exist, but unless and until it's negotiated at the table, the money will continue to sit there.
Right. So what happens if, I guess I know what probably happens, if having approved the budget the way it is, the contract's negotiated for, let's say, more money?
Then you'd have to come back for a supplemental appropriation.
Yeah, or, yeah, you'd have to appropriate it.
Okay. So the other things where you'll see notes are. So the other things, um, where you'll see notes are, um, I think this one is the third from the bottom line, Retirement Benefit. This is one, one that's been done apparently for a, a good bit of time in the Water Department. The accountant has, has pushed back on it, that, um, it's, it's not allowed to spend, so... And again, the Water Department is, they have the authorization to spend their budget, and so long as the town accountant signs off on it and finds that it's within the four corners of what's allowed, that's great. So it'll get appropriated, um, but I just have an obligation to say, you know, just because it's appropriated, it still needs to be either negotiated with the Union or allowed by law to be expended. So those are the, the personnel for water, and then you get into the expense. So again, this, this generally gets some people's attention, but, um, the note there is professional legal services, twelve thousand dollar appropriation being sought. I've not made any suggestion on changing the numbers, but I did note, um, allowable expense. And that, again, runs to what we've done over the last three years that I've done budgets, and I think of more, more important is it ties in with the case that just came back from, you know, this period before. So after the Department Budget, we get to the capital articles. And we have the total capital plan of six hundred ninety thousand dollars. It lists the department that has made the request that's being recommended to be funded, what the project or equipment is, the cost, and the description of the anticipated funding source. So some of them you'll see are from Capital Stabilization Fund, some are from Free Cash, some are Excise Revenue, some are Operating Budget, um, some are Cap Stabilization again, and then lastly, you see Water Department retained earnings. So this is, as was voted by the Capital Planning Committee. Do we have any questions on that one? John, you look perplexed.
No.
Oh, okay.
No, no, I'm just trying to get used to the glasses.
Okay. Um, we then get to, um, one of the big issues that we have in this warrant is the issue of the condition of the roads in town, and how to planfully address their repair and upkeep. There are three articles that had been spread in, um, different sections of the warrant, based on whether it was an appropriation or a bylaw, for instance. They normally live in different sections of the warrant. The Finance Committee, I think, wisely suggested, let's put all these three together, because they all tie together, even though one is a bylaw request, one is an appropriation request, and one is a debt exclusion. People need to see the whole picture at the same time. In fact, it was recommended that the bylaw, which is the promise about moving forward, that there's a commitment, if you give money to make these repairs, we promise to fund a pavement management plan each year, or make the recommendation to town meeting that it do so. To actually have the promise first, and once that passes, then ask for the money. What was said to me is, you know, you're asking for the money in the front of the warrant, and not giving us the promise until the, the backside of the warrant where the bylaw lives, so... Hopefully, this, this makes a little more sense for people. So you'll see, uh, the bylaw request here is to establish a pavement management plan, which, um, in short, would be a plan that, over the next five years, will build to roughly a million dollars a year. That would be recommended by the bylaw. There'd be an obligation to recommend this Select Board, Town Administrator, and Finance Committee. And it would be comprised of the annual allocation of Chapter ninety funds, to the extent that they exist, the two hundred fifty thousand from Free Cash, and fifty thousand a year from Excise Revenue, being increased by fifty each year until we get to the, um, the two hundred fifty thousand dollar mark. And then each year, that two fifty would be put on the table. So you'd have roughly five hundred from Chapter ninety, two fifty Free Cash, two fifty from Excise, giving you the roughly a million dollars a year as a commitment that the folks that build the budget and make the recommendations would make, that, that they'll, they'll dedicate those resources to keeping the roads up. So this is a bylaw that, that stands for that proposition. The Finance Committee has voted, where you see on the next page here, um, under the recommendations. The Selectmen recommend that bylaw. The Finance Committee, um, recommend it with an amendment, adding at the end of Section Two, "Subject to availability of funds." The point was brought up the other night appropriately, that if you have a bylaw that says that the Selectmen and the Finance Committee and the TA are going to put those figures on the table, you're obligated to do so. And you have to have a balanced budget, so it could be, on any given year, that the obligation to fund this pavement management plan in a tight, tight year could impact your ability to fund your operational budget. And it could, in a very significant time or crisis, mean you'd be making cuts in your operating budget in order to fund the pavement management plan. So they felt, um, and I think I captured that right, Lynn, right? They felt the need to, to have the caveat that it's subject to the availability of funds. So if there is something catastrophic one year, and there isn't, um, you know, a quarter million dollars in Excise to, to put on the table, then that gives the ability to, you know, to, to not.
So is the Finance Committee planning to make that motion to amend? Is that language?
Yeah, somebody, somebody would need to.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, but that's good for John to know that that's, that's coming.
Yeah.
So you're going to...
Is that in, in Article ten, or is that in Article...
Article ten.
Yeah.
No, it's Article ten, yeah, because this is the...
Yeah.
I can try to play with the pagination even a little more and pull that back up a page.
Yeah, try to pull it back up.
So basically, Section Two, right now, is each yearly year, the Board of Selectmen, the Finance Committee, the Town Administrator shall submit to the town meeting a proposal to fund the pavement management plan. That would then be subject to the availability of funds.
Uh, just, well, we got added here, too, just, because you got majority and/or two-thirds vote. I take the, the bylaw and the, well, I think Article eleven are majority, but the bond borrowing is two-thirds?
Correct.
Okay. Sure.
Yep. So, the bylaw, we get through, and then we get to Article eleven, which is to see if the town will vote to appropriate from available funds in the Treasury, specifically local receipts, automobile Excise, tax funds, the sum of fifty thousand dollars to further supplement the town's FY twenty allocation of Chapter ninety, paving funds from the Commonwealth in the amount of four, fifteen, one seventy-six, which we have the, the, the written commitment from the Commonwealth on, and the sum of two hundred fifty thousand, as previously voted as part of the fiscal twenty capital plan, all to fund the town's fiscal twenty pavement management plan. So that's the, we did the bylaw, making the promise, and this is the, this is the ask for the money. And after that one comes the big ask, which is Article twelve. Article twelve, very simply stated, uh, that table got blown out. I'm going to fix that.
Jim, I'm wondering, when I'm looking at this, and I'm sure it has to do with the pagination, but if you look at Article eleven...
Yep.
Above it, it says...
Yeah, those should be on the page above.
Recommend.
Yep.
Okay, so, and maybe even putting a line under...
Like, under the recommended, so there's a clear break?
Yeah, do you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So, so you know which recommendations are with which article? That might be one way to do it. Because it gets a little confusing when you...
Yeah, the, um, the, the table on the bottom, obviously, um, needs to be fixed. It, it decided to expand itself unreasonably across the whole page. So basically, what you have is, um, a debt exclusion question for five point one million dollars to fund a pavement management plan. The pavement management plan document is on the town's website, right on the front page. Um, hard copy's available here in the town hall, and...
And there will be a presentation?
There'll be a presentation at the town meeting, um, from the consultant that did the plan. The, um, the plan is a three-year capital plan that, over the course of those three years, hits the roads that are at the point of disrepair, where they are still most salvageable with short money, as opposed to some that are fully blown away already. So there's a balance between fully doing roads over, and then doing some overlay on roads that haven't quite gotten to the point of the cliff where they drop off. You'll see in the pavement management plan, I think, an interesting graphic that shows at a certain point in time where you start really throwing good money after bad if you don't maintain the road. The, the degradation curve, um, drops off pretty significantly after a certain number of years, so... This is a plan that was put together by the Beta Engineering Group. They actually came in in twenty fifteen, twenty fourteen and fifteen for the town, and did, uh, an overall analysis of the town's roadways. Each road documented what the condition was, um, gave it a rating, and created a database that, um, funnels through the, the software program a rank order on how you should be doing your road repair work. So you get away from, you know, a superintendent of public works making a decision that may make someone happy, may make somebody else less happy. Gets away from a Select Board making those determinations, which can bring both of the same, and, and puts it into, uh, the hands of a, of an engineering firm outside of the town that has a, a program that, based on, on actual data, makes those calls. But again, they'll, they'll be there to make that presentation.
So that plan already exists as to what roads actually...
It does, yep, it's on the website, it's on the website tonight. And actually, there's a map on the table, right in the hall when you walk in. There's a, there's a map on the table that, that shows, um, in color which roads get done and which, which year it's projected.
Okay.
This table, if it were built correctly, would show those numbers with dollar signs that are on the far left that don't have the all signs, against the descriptors on the, the far right. So if this plan were to pass, for a, a home, uh, value of two hundred fifty thousand dollars, projected quarterly increase would be thirty-six dollars and ninety-five cents. For a projected quarterly increase on a house of three hundred thousand, forty-four dollars and thirty-three cents. Quarterly increase on a house at three fifty would be fifty-one dollars and seventy-two cents, and four hundred thousand would be fifty-nine dollars and eleven cents. So not meant to be all encompassing, but just to give kind of a, a range of what a quarterly increase would look like for houses of those assessed value. Anybody have any question on that one? Okay, we then get into the general, uh, financial articles. We have a two hundred thousand dollar borrowing request for the Greenville Road Bridge over Walker Brook. We received a state grant of a half a million dollars for this project. The delta to be able to finish the project is, uh, two hundred thousand, so this is the request to, to do that. If we're not able to move forward with the grant within that window, and we lose the grant, we then are looking at funding the whole thing, because it's in a state of significant enough disrepair that we will be compelled to, to do the repair. So that's two hundred thousand dollars straight borrow. The next, Article fourteen, is the article that got added just last night. So Kathy, this is one that would have changed some of the, the page numbering as well. This is a request that comes in from the Neshoba, Neshoba Valley Technical High School. This is to do roof, window, and door project at the school. If this is approved by a sufficient number of the district communities, um, and the project goes forward, it wouldn't be borrowed until next year, so this would actually be a budgetary impact in next year's budget. But they do need to have it on the warrant for each community to take up, so they can determine whether or not they have sufficient support to be able to move forward with the project. This would be around a forty thousand dollar annual hit to us, based on the total project costs, less the SBA, um, grant that they're receiving from the Commonwealth, and then based on the formula that, um, capital items are divided between the communities and the district.
Is that a two-thirds vote, too?
That would be a two-thirds vote, because it's a borrow.
And that's for the whole district, the three million?
Correct.
Okay, so what, what is our share of that?
Um, actually, I, I have it in my office, but I will have it that, I will have it that night.
Yeah, that's okay, you know, I don't need it.
But I'll, but I'll have it.
Where, uh, you know, somebody might ask, uh...
Okay. And the next is coming in from the Water Commissioners. They're looking to, um, have authorization to use a hundred thousand dollars of their retained earnings to pay down a bond anticipation note or a ban. And that's a temporary note that they took out last year as they were prepping for the Main Street Water Replacement Project. So this already received authorization for the project last year, this is just paying off the temporary note. Next, we get into ninety-five hundred dollars for equipment. This comes in from the Cemetery Commission, looking for, uh, purchasing cemetery equipment at ninety-five hundred dollars. Seventeen is looking for authorization for the Board of Assessors to be able to negotiate and enter into a payment in lieu of taxes or pilot agreement between a solar company that has a project being constructed on twenty-two West Meadow Road. And, um, the way that would generally work is the, if you straight tax it, the Commonwealth isn't very clear, there, there's not a lot of clarity about, is it real estate because it's tied to the earth, or is it personal property? And there's, then some litigation about it, and what a lot of communities have turned to do, and has in fact been recommended by DOR, is to negotiate a, a pilot that makes sense for you locally. And there are rough parameters out there when you call other communities, see what they've done. So this would allow the assessors to negotiate such a deal, and it would be a, a twenty-year payment with an escalator. So it'll start out as X dollars in year one, and then there'd be a fixed, um, escalator. So each year, you'd know over the twenty what you're going to see in revenue for that pilot. Can't be done without town meeting's authorization. Next, you see eighteen, which is thirty-five thousand for the purpose of funding a feasibility study regarding affordable housing on Dudley Road, so this comes in from the Housing Authority. Next is nineteen, which is a request, second year running, for five thousand dollars for the town's three hundredth anniversary celebration, which is, um, twenty thirty-two, which seems far away, but it is going to come quickly.
It, it, Jim, I was just wondering, with that, um, anniversary, is, is that the idea of trying to build up the funds?
Correct.
Or are they anticipating spending that money planning?
They, they may spend a little bit on advertising, you know, just to, to begin a slow creep of awareness.
Yeah.
But, but just, basically, to start building...
Mostly to salt some money away.
We did it last year as well.
Okay.
We gave them some money last year as well.
Yeah, five, five last year as well.
Okay.
So then we get into Article twenty, which is the, um, the request for funding for the assessors' periodic inspections. The funding source here is overlay surplus funds. And again, that's one of the weird things, so in the earlier part of the document, there are those definitions, and presuming that people haven't committed them to memory, we will just reference the fact that each year, we are required to hold aside a certain amount of money in the budget in the overlay, in case somebody challenges, predominantly, in case someone challenges their tax bill, you know, you're, you're assessing me too high. If that challenge is, is upheld, um, and we have to refund that person money, there's a hole in the budget. So you have this overlay sitting aside that you can use to, to then fill. That's kind of the layperson's, um, description there. After three years, if all of the claims have been satisfied, and there's nothing pending, whatever you have left in that overlay is considered overlay surplus and can be certified by the assessors to be used as a revenue source at a town meeting. So this is a, an assessor's ask for the, um, the funds, and it's assessor's funds. So it's, it's a nice marriage. Next, you see a thirty-six hundred dollar request coming in from TMA for some emergency management equipment. Then we get into the stabilization article. There is no dollar figure there yet, which caused some, uh, concern initially, but we ended up tickling a recommendation out of the Finance Committee at the end of it. It's left blank right now, because we don't know, based on all the financial articles in the warrant that come before this, what the, the, the balance in any of our, our accounts, Free Cash or otherwise, is going to look like. We're expecting that they'll be funding sufficient to, to salt some away in stabilization, and, um, this article is there for that purpose. General business, we have, the first is adoption of, um, non-contractual personnel policies, recommendation for a change, ninety dash one currently reads as is shown, and replace it with the following, and ninety dash one as is being contemplated as a replacement. The angle behind this is to try to keep focus on the fact that, unlike two thousand and three, when the policies were last adopted across the board, when the, nearly the entire working population wasn't unionized, today, with the exception of a, a small handful of positions, everybody's unionized. So this is an attempt to try to show that we... So this is an attempt to try to show that we need to coordinate and tie in whatever the personnel policies are with the union contracts. Union contract will trump if the issue is discussed in both, but if there's no discussion in the union contract, it will come to the policies. Then we get the recycling. Article 24 is to delete the recycling bylaw in its entirety and the Board of Health submits this and their rationale is that they can create what is in the recycling bylaw through regulation. They have that authority under Chapter 111 of the General Laws. And it gives more flexibility for them as the situation in the world can change from month to month or year to year to be able to amend a regulation as opposed to having to wait a year to be able to handle it at a town meeting through a bylaw. So it just provides more flexibility for the elected Board of Health. Next, we get into the zoning bylaws. And the first is a bylaw that seeks to amend the zoning by striking through, which would designate a deletion, and adding, which is designated by the underlying text, information from and to the bylaws it currently is to create the opportunity for accessory use apartments in people's homes. So this carries on for a good number of pages. And I know that the Planning Board's been working tirelessly on it and they'll be well prepared to speak to it on the floor. There is a hearing on this matter that is called for the 29th in the Great Hall for this and the zoning articles that will follow next. There is a public hearing. So if people have interest or questions, they can come to that public hearing in addition to being able to ask them on the floor of town meeting. Next, we get into the marijuana bylaws. And there are eight in total, Adam?
I think that's correct.
Eight in total. So the first seven of them are very narrow and they relate to very specific types of adult use or recreational marijuana. You'll see the first, Article 26, is whether or not to allow recreational marijuana cultivation. Now, you'll note that these are the same questions that were voted on at the ballot earlier this week. All of these, and this is where it was a little funky, all of them were voted yes, right?
Yes.
All of them were voted yes, which means no.
Yes, to prohibit.
Yes, to prohibit. So to kind of step back from the document for a minute and give some context. When the state had a ballot initiative to determine whether the state wanted to allow for adult use of recreational marijuana, the town of Townsend voted in the affirmative. When the law was fine tuned and when the regulations were put in place, if you were a yes community, but you did not want it in your town, you had to do two things. You had to go to the ballot to seek a prohibition and then get a confirming vote at the town meeting. If you were a no community originally, you could just go to the town meeting. But because Townsend was a yes community on the global ballot question, the requirement for consideration of a prohibition is both of those two prongs. One has already occurred, so everything is in play for prohibition on the floor of town meeting. So the first of these articles are very narrow. One is, as I said, cultivation. The next is for product manufacturing. The next is for retailers. The next is for marijuana testing facilities. The next is for marijuana research facilities. The next is for marijuana transportation or distribution facilities. And the next is licensed recreational marijuana-related facilities. And the last is the bylaw. And I'm not going to attempt to speak to this, but I know we have Adam here who did all the legal work on it. So I would defer to you to just offer a comment or two.
Sure. So the only purpose of this is, you'll recall that at the special town meeting, we adopted a marijuana bylaw that regulates marijuana establishments, recreational establishments in the town of Townsend. So the objective here is what we've done in the preceding seven articles, or potentially done in the preceding seven articles, is prohibited individual types of marijuana establishments consistent with the vote that was taken at the ballot. What this does is it works in exceptions to the regulation that was adopted at the special town meeting stating that that regulation still stands with respect to any sorts of facilities that haven't been banned. Now, there's a possibility that, given as I understand it, that every one of those seven types that we just discussed in the preceding seven articles, the vote was yes, which is no, at the ballot box. If the vote is also yes on each of the preceding seven articles on the town meeting warrant, then although the bylaw will still stand, we're working in an exception for any type of marijuana establishment that's been prohibited and you've prohibited every type of marijuana establishment. So it'll be a bylaw that's sort of meaningless and at a future town meeting, we can go back in and essentially eliminate the bylaw in its entirety. But in the event that one or two or three or anything less than all seven types are banned, this regulation will still be in effect with respect to any type that is still permitted within the town of Townsend's boards.
So if any of them stay as allowed, okay, so they get no votes, no, I don't want to prohibit, then this bylaw takes care of how those will be handled.
And it already does. It's just that it will be preserved moving forward with respect to those allowed marijuana uses. And this is a very tedious way to do it with eight warrant articles and ballot questions, but it's what the legislative scheme requires in Massachusetts. It's just how it was crafted. Every community is dealing with this and every community is going to be faced with the potential need to do some fine tuning of their bylaws at a future town meeting to address what may occur at the upcoming town meeting.
Can I ask a question? We've had a lot of people come into our office and ask what... So it was voted yes at the ballot. If it's voted yes at town meeting, it has to be voted yes by two-thirds vote or it doesn't pass, correct?
That's correct. Only a simple majority was required at the ballot box. But because these are zoning bylaw changes, any zoning bylaw amendments, regardless of what the topic is, requires a two-thirds majority at town meeting.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure-
All seven of them require two-thirds.
Right. Okay. I just want to make sure I'm telling people the right thing.
That's correct.
Yeah, okay.
Which is why this last article, kind of the catch-all in length, is important. Because if you have a majority, like consistent at the ballot, but not the two-thirds, this becomes very important to still have on course.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Would it be possible to follow the vote at the ballot last vote, what it funded? Just to adopt a general bylaw as opposed to zoning bylaw?
The Attorney General's Office has said no. There was a recent case where the advice we were giving, even as recently as six months ago, was that you could do both. You could adopt a general bylaw with respect to the substance, but you could also attempt to zone it. And there have since been decisions from the Attorney General's Office that said that that's not permissible.
People were trying to do that for that very reason, that it's a majority vote.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, and that would be consistent with the idea if you voted at the ballot, the majority, people don't want to allow it, that you could just enact a general bylaw. I hadn't heard of that, Adam, that the AG had been disproving those.
Communities had thought that they ought to be able to treat it much like they treat smoking, tobacco. It's not so much a zoning issue as it is a quality of life issue, where you can smoke, where you can't.
Right.
The AG's office has since determined that, you know, we're dealing with marijuana establishments here and these are uses that are regulated by zoning. And so where these sorts of facilities can locate, whether they're testing facilities or retailers or cultivation facilities, that's really a zoning question. And attempting to backdoor it into your general bylaw so as to avail yourself of the simple majority vote doesn't fly.
So we kind of had this discussion last night at our meeting.
I'm just going to smile and nod because I have no recollection of what your government does.
We talked about, I think it was the governor that proposed changing the bylaw requirement at a local level, the zoning bylaws, to a majority.
Simple majority. That's correct.
Where does that stand? Is that a bill?
I'm not sure what the status of the bill, but that has been a topic of discussion.
So as an extension of like the municipal-
Modernization, right. So there's sort of a round two municipal modernization that's under consideration. This concept of a simple majority in the zoning context is something that has been revisited time and time again as land use legislation has been revisited time and time again, subdivision, zoning, et cetera, and just has never come to fruition, whether this will be-
So it hasn't passed its way through the legislature yet?
It has not.
Okay.
That's correct.
Wasn't that only directed towards affordable housing, though?
No, I think it was intended because when I read about it, it said something about especially for that. But I think they wanted to just give towns control of, you know, simple majority for how they wanted to zone their town.
Okay. Does that mean, what I heard earlier on-
But it hasn't gone through.
Was that, because I expressed this concern to other people and other moderators is that as I saw, they were setting up a sort of a two-pronged type of system. One would be a two-thirds vote if it had to do with affordable housing issues, however those might be defined. But it'd be, I'm sorry, it'd be a majority vote for affordable housing issues, but everything else would still be two-thirds.
Yeah. What I heard was it was all going to all majority. But I wondered where it stood. And you haven't heard anything, so that means it hasn't gone through.
I think, John, what you're recalling is Governor Baker, very specifically in his State of the State, talked about it in the housing context. I think the underlying legislation that's being contemplated is broader than that, but he was focusing on housing.
He wants to give more local control.
Which effectively gives less local control, in my opinion.
Well, yes and no. Well?
Well, because, I mean, you, I think the time-honored idea has been, you know, you have a two-thirds vote, that symbolizes at least most of the people, a good majority, two-thirds, want to change the bylaw or to enact a bylaw.
Because it's property rights.
Yeah. This makes it easier to, I mean, we've got to keep changing it around, you know, every year.
I think the idea of the Modernization Act, though, is more to take it out of the state's hand and give it back to the town. Instead of them saying, you need a two-thirds for this, the idea is the town decide.
Might be. I think that, well-
Because they get a lot of flack because people complain about the state tells them how to do this and how to do that. So now they're handing stuff back. We might find that that isn't what we want after all.
Any questions on marijuana? No? I think it was a pretty clear message on Monday.
How did it vote? How close was it in terms of two-thirds for the people that came to the poll? Oh, you don't know offhand?
No, I had the results. It was, all three precincts voted yes. And about 150 more yeses than noes generally.
Out of how many?
Out of 958.
What are the actuals, yeses and noes?
Okay.
Well, not by precinct, but-
Question one, 508 to 405, 45 blanks. Question two, 533 to 401, 24 blanks. Question three, 555 to 381, 22 blanks. Question four, 522 to 403 with 33 blanks. Question five, 511 to 414 with 33 blanks. Question six, 543 to 371 with 44 blanks. And question seven, 589 to 336 with 33 blanks.
The big message is no retail.
Yeah, definitely. The others are kind of, if the-
Town meeting vote superseds available.
That's the math.
No, they have their companions. You have to get prohibition at both places in order to be able to prohibit.
So if you, if noes voted on any one of these questions, then that takes effect.
Okay. We then get to special legislation articles. The first is a request for an act authorizing the town of Townsend to continue the employment of Richard Bailey as police chief. And this is special legislation in the description. If this warrant article passes the town meeting, it will then be forwarded to the legislature for a vote as other towns have done for the police department members. The passing of this article allows Richard Bailey to remain in his position as chief according to his employment contract, which goes past his 65th birthday and further allows him to work in the police department after he something's 65 years of age reaches, passes. So that's a special act, biggest question. Next, you have the citizen petition articles. The first of which comes in by citizens petition, but related to the water department. And this one, I think, most simply stands for the proposition that the petitioners are looking to amend the charter to specifically reference that their power and duties of the water commissioners are as described in the enacting or authorizing legislation from 1933 and 1912, I guess, right? And then further defined in MasterCard Law, Chapter 41, Section 69B, which was accepted by the town vote, May 9th of 2017. And then in addition, Chapter 381 of the Acts of 1920. Basically looking to codify what the petitioners believe are the regulations, laws, and special acts that the petitioners believe would have the water department be an independent autonomous public body.
You summarized it well. I think that's the objective. I can't say that I've spoken with the water department, but that's-
Well, the water department didn't submit it. It was submitted by some citizens to address the issue.
But how can this be acted on town meeting vote? That's my question.
Question, I don't think you can amend town charter simply by filing an article to amend it.
That would be my position as well. Town charters can be amended in two fashions. There's a statutory mechanism for adopting what's known as a home rule charter. That's what the town of Townsend currently has. Home rule charter requires a lengthy process where a charter commission is assembled, commission meets, makes recommendations, et cetera. Ultimately, the resulting charter or charter amendment goes to town meeting, often goes to the ballot as well. Second mechanism is a special act charter. Although the roots of Townsend's charter are in a, or as a home rule charter, the town has used previously the special act process to amend that charter. And in fact, that's the process that's been underway with the Charter Review Committee, is the anticipated use of the special act process. That process is a bit simpler, but not easy by any means. It still requires generally a committee that meets and makes recommendations to town meeting, a town meeting vote authorizing special legislation, and then a home rule petition to the legislature for ultimate adoption by the legislature of special legislation that puts into effect those changes. So there is no mechanism in Massachusetts. There is in some other states whereby the public through a citizen's petition process can affect special legislation or amend a local charter.
Right.
To amend a local charter.
So this one, and I'll have to probably do a little bit of research in town meeting time, but I think- time, but I think this one might need to be ruled as out of order. Because it's similar, I would take it similar to a, let's say, a zoning bylaw that there had been no public hearing by the planning board. It wouldn't have the prerequisites for being enacted by the town, even if the town wanted to. And this is something that the town can't do by a warrant article.
And it'll be good practice for you to say that in the context of Article 35, because Article 36 does the same thing.
Yeah.
So Article 36 is another citizen petition, and this is also seeking to amend the charter specifically as relates to the recall provision.
Yep.
So there may be a bright line that connects the two.
Yeah, yeah.
And then we get to the last of the warrant articles, which is also citizen petition, and it's been properly submitted. It may yet not go forward the night of town meeting because we've been advised by a member of the Board of Health that the petitioner is going to be meeting with them to try to create a regulation that accomplishes this. But this stands for the proposition that the use of single-use plastic bags would be prohibited in the town of Townsend.
And this is a citizen petition?
It is.
Okay.
I think the Board of Health, consistent with the recycling bylaw article earlier in the warrant, where they would rather not have a bylaw but would rather do it through regulatory scheme.
Well, this is something the town, if they wanted to, could do it, but, you know, if the Board of Health, you know, advocates that it's better to do it by regulation, then probably this wouldn't pass, but.
Adam, what do towns usually do? Is it by regulation typically? Because I thought other towns, other towns in the area, I think Lunenburg voted at town meeting on it.
I think Concorde did too.
Yeah, oh, Concorde.
He had all word. Right. I mean, we could.
Off the bottom of this way.
You can't, so you're correct. Lunenburg did it at their last town meeting. It can be done either way, so as you saw in the context of an earlier warrant article, many boards of health prefer to address things like recycling through regulations, just because of the simplicity of having to amend them to adjust to changing conditions in the community. They can do that more easily with, you know, public notice at an open meeting without a town meeting vote. What I've seen is that this, this plastic bag ban, which has taken root across Massachusetts, has sort of been a bit of a grassroots effort, and therefore it's citizens that are proposing it. Could those citizens have gone to their boards of health and advised their boards of health and incentivized them to adopt it as a regulation? Sure, but they haven't. They've just been submitting citizens' petitions, and we've seen it in a number of communities. So it's enforceable, but you have the same issue, that if it's a bylaw, then if there were a need to change it, and I've had occasion to receive questions and have to give interpretations as to, well, you know, you've got this definition of thin film, single-use plastic bag. What is that exactly? And how does this apply to different types of stores or establishments in your community? So if there's a need to provide clarity in the future, you can only do so by way of a bylaw amendment.
Versus having a discussion with the Board of Health and working through those details and definitions in a regulation.
In a regulation, that's correct.
Thank you.
All right. And that puts us to the end of the annual town meeting warrant. Then, just to very quickly go through the rest of the book, just because I have a captive audience. We have the, how we do our budget process. So this spells out all of the rules that have been adopted by the Board of Selectmen subsequent to having had the Collins Institute come out and do best practices modeling for us. And it follows through. Then we get into municipal finance in comparable communities in our region. This is, the data is coming off of the DLS website. So just some simple comparisons. Population, income per capita, average single-family tax bill, debt and debt as a percentage of total budget, free cash and free cash as a total, percentage of total budget, stabilization and stabilization as a percent of total budget. And we get into the actual revenue expenditure forecast document and model that we use. There's an explanation of what it is. And then we have our revenue expenditure summary sheet, which shows that for fiscal '20, as laid out before you in the warrant, we are in balance. And each subsequent year out over the five-year period, you see what, based on the projections and assumptions built into the revenue expense tool, we would look like at the bottom line. Then get into some of the underlying details. So the four-year trend by revenue fund type, basically the exploded pie chart showing by functional segment where the money goes, total property tax levy, not surprisingly, you see the, you see the way that that line goes up. Basically, how you arrive at the total tax levy from one year to the next. This gives that example, the prior year's tax levy limit, 2.5% that's allowed under Prop 2.5. There are no current operating overrides, certified new growth, so that's things that have come on and created value since last year that are now taxable. Levy limit total is then reached. From there, you have your debt exclusions that are authorized on the books. And by detail, we have non-school debt exclusions, we have North Middlesex debt exclusion, and the Shoah Valley technical high school debt exclusions, which gets us to the maximum allowable, leaving zero taxing capacity to the total, for the taxation, real estate taxation of
So the other $5 million of the budget's coming someplace else?
Or someplace else? We're clicking right there.
Okay.
You got me all, you got me all excited now with my clicker. So this is just a little bit of additional information about new growth and what it's looked like over the course of time. I made an edit to this chart based on something Sue said to me earlier this evening. The word "actual" appears now in front of that, the header in the green chart. We take in that chart above, the actuals over five years, and then the average, and we use that as our projected for the next year. So you'll note that in this chart, we have, in fiscal '19 in the green chart, the last indicator is $184,000. But directly above it, you'll see for fiscal '20, we're projecting new growth only at $140 and change. So if I plugged in the projected, I think it would artificially look like our economic tax growth is going down. That's why I limited it to the actuals, to show what we've actually seen, with the exception of 15, of '18, dip in '18, it's been a steady, slight but steady increase.
Do you happen to know how that is arrived at? I mean, new growth, that means, it means income.
You put an addition on your house, you put a deck on your house.
Okay, so it increases the valuation. It's not necessarily a new house.
It can be.
It can be.
It can be. Anything that wasn't there to be taxed the year before, that is this year.
Okay.
Simply said?
Correct.
I just was curious as to how that breaks down. Do we have a lot of people doing additions? Or, you know, is it the majority of it coming from new housing?
Right, well, you'll see, I mean, the residential is bulk, so it doesn't really give you that answer, but you'll see residential, commercial versus personal property. So what, what makes up those amounts?
Well, that would all be residential anyway, so.
Right. I'm sure the assessors have, you know, have that data to drill down a little deeper.
Be curious to know.
So then we get into the cherry sheet. So this is where some of the other money comes from, John. This shows a 20-year run of what local aid has looked like. Interestingly, we are, we've not yet returned to where we were 10 years ago with local aid. We're starting to climb up and get a little closer to it, but we're still not there.
The House's budget looks pretty good.
We'll see.
See what the Senate does.
The types of things that are contained within local aid. The largest is unrestricted general government aid, and then you have these subcomponents, Chapter 70. We don't see any Chapter 70 because we're part of a regional school district, but that's education aid. So North Middlesex and the Shoah get their own Chapter 70 allocations. If you were a community that had your own schools as a department, you would see Chapter 70 money on your cherry sheet. Veterans benefits, that's an amount of money that we get reimbursed a year after the fact. 75 cents on the dollar for things that we spend on our veteran population that are allowable under the veterans' regulations. Aid to public libraries, there's a formula that allows for the state to put a little bit of money on the table for public libraries. And then state-owned land, this is an item for state payments in lieu of taxes. Put the indicator of a capital S in front of the acronym PILOT to signify it's a state pilot, for a purpose that I'll show you in a moment. And that's $180, $180, close to $190,000 a year for the town of Townsend, that the state pays for the land that the state owns. Little fun fact, at the bottom, the paper we get was called the cherry sheet, and that's because, as silly as it sounds, it used to be printed on cherry-colored paper, so that's why it's still referred to as the cherry sheet. We then get into local receipts, things like motor vehicle excise, meals tax, licenses and permits, fines and penalties, interest, local payments in lieu of taxes. So that's where the distinction is. This is something that is also a pilot, but it's contained within the local receipts and not within the state aid. So it's a local pilot. Rentals, that is consistent every year, that is reflective of the lease that the town has with the cell tower on it. We see $32,000 and change a year. Other departmental revenue, fines and forfeitures. My goodness, my eyes can't read. Investment income and miscellaneous recurring. Thank you. So there's a description of each of the things we just talked about. You then get into enterprise fund revenue, and total operating budget is shown in blue, and the portion of that operating budget that is transferred back to the general fund as overhead is shown in the, I guess, brownish color. And the way that's described up above is there are, there are certain expenditures that are covered within the general government budget on behalf of the enterprise, like health insurance for employees, property and liability insurance on equipment and buildings, retirement assessments, those types of things. So there's a, there's a formula and a spreadsheet that shows, based on the percentage of total budget, that the water department budget is against the overall operating budget. Certain of the expenses are determined based on applying that percentage as a, as part of a formula. Next, you see other available funds. Other available funds could be wetlands protection fund, West Townsend reading room receipts, ambulance receipts, cemetery, sale of lots, recreation receipts, PEG access, septic title five. So you'll notice that things like wetlands, flat to nothing, you barely see the, see the bar. West Townsend, again, $2,500 bucks, I believe, says there, doesn't, doesn't really even make the chart. Ambulance receipts, clearly a significant source of funding. The ambulance receipts have been used to offset the cost of running the ambulance service and, in some cases, to pay the debt service on ambulance-related equipment, whether it's, well, primarily it's ambulance. So when we have an ambulance that appears in the capital plan, you would see it being approved by the capital planning committee, and the listed column for funding used would be ambulance receipts. And then you get to the expenditures. So this is the flip side of the coin. This shows, you know, the last four years where the money's been being spent. And there's the pie. Obviously, as is the case in communities throughout the Commonwealth, education is the lion's share of where a local budget goes.
Does that include debt service?
It does. The debt, I think there should be a note that says as much. When we get to the education section, I think there's a note that says that. So municipal departments, so this would be municipal salaries and expenses, four-year trend. So salaries are, I should change the colors of those, those are really hard. So you see that, you know, the line is definitely trending in the upward direction. Bottom line on the totals, you'll see, you know, $5.5 million, $6.7, $6.9, $7.3. So, you know, over the course of the last four years, there's been a, from $5.5 to $7.3 million. Education, four-year trend there. And in the descriptor up above, talks about what's built into that. I think the big message for what we've experienced this year is an assessment initially that was well out of range for what the communities could handle. And I think to the credit of the school committee and the administration, they went back and they sharpened things up. They reduced the assessment that they're asking for, and it's something that we've been able to meet in the budget that came forward in Article 5. I'm not certain that Pepperell is in the position to be able to meet this current assessment without an operating override. So that's still well in play. It could yet be that Pepperell's override fails, they can't meet the assessment. If ASV is a no, then it's back to the drawing board. But we, at this point in this budget, can meet that assessment.
What year was it? 2011 or, we had like three town meetings to pass an override to fund the school, and it wouldn't pass, and come back. We did it two or three times, as I recall.
Yeah, I think it was three times.
Moving from education to employee benefits, this one is noteworthy, for nothing else in looking at the overall expenses on a downward trend, and particularly the health insurance is on a downward trend. And this goes largely, if not nearly exclusively, to the fact that the public employees that you have working for you recognize that the benefits that have been carried for years in municipal governments are very rich benefits. And it used to be that money wasn't great, so benefits were good if you worked in local government. Money has crept its way back up to a great degree, and benefits have also continued to increase. So I think when you're going before the taxpayers and looking to have a budget funded, and you're asking people that are struggling and that have, you know, a $5,000 deductible on their health insurance plan to fund your budget where you have no deductibles and $5 copays, at some point, something's got to give. And that line you see there over the last four years is, I think, a strong indicator of the fact that the employees recognize that and have been very, very reasonable. Because this is all bargaining stuff. This is stuff that they didn't have to do, they didn't have to give, but I think they recognize the importance to the community that fair is fair, and you need to be more reflective of what the marketplace is. Those are just further descriptions of those categories. Debt service, so you'll see our non-exempt, our exempt, short-term borrowing and total debt. So the basic story there is the far, the far right hand, that our debt, while small as a total percentage of budget, is climbing.
Are we fully into paying for the high school now?
This budget does get us there. Well, that's, no. No, because there's still some out there, right, Sue? That could be turned back, which could serve to.
Yeah, they're not quite done yet.
We're close.
With the field?
No, it's, it, yeah.
Couple of, couple of other projects.
All the things that still have been.
Yeah, their, their school committee's talking about some other stuff right now. But I don't think it's going to make an awful lot of difference. I mean, the final borrowing hasn't happened until, until the project closes. Okay? So whatever the project closes at would be the final. And we still have $2 or $3 million in contingency right now.
So depending on what they decide going forward, we could be close to seeing what we're seeing. we're seeing.
Yeah, I don't think it's going to change an awful lot.
Okay, thanks.
So then you have the...
Yeah.
Four-year trend for the debt outside of the general budget, which is Water Enterprise, North Middlesex, and the Chauva Valley Tech. Enterprise fund expenses, this basically just mirrors what you saw on the revenue side because it's in balance. Water Enterprise, four-year expense trend, personnel and contractual things going up, supply staying relatively flat. There's a spike in raising appropriate articles, which is interesting. In fiscal seventeen, there was a one-time infusion of, it looked like some free cash into the operating budget. Capitals flat, and debt has danced up a little bit the last two years. State and county assessments, these are things that we get as deducts on the cherry sheet. And then miscellaneous expenses are property liability, workers' comp insurance, and offsets on the cherry sheet that we see for the library. Reserves, just discussed very briefly. Overlay, we talked about that earlier, that's the amount we hold aside every year. And general stabilization and capital stabilization, what those two are and what we see. Snow and ice, the one thing you're allowed to deficit spend in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts knowingly is snow and ice. And communities generally underfund in the operating budget and make up for it in the spring, which is no different than how it's done here in Townsend. Capital planning committee, and this is going to round out the document. So you've got the members of the committee, town flag, the bylaw, the five-year rolling capital plan with everybody's asks, and then the approved plan that appears in the warrant. And that's the last page of the book. Couple things to tighten up on in terms of formatting. But is there anything glaringly missing? Anybody?
I don't see anything missing. I think it's very complete in the...as long as people don't get confused by all the information for the town meeting. I think it's...
Well, that's where you come in.
Well, it's liable to give everybody this information. And I think we'll be able to, you know, let people know where to go to get the meat and potatoes of the town meeting.
Page this, page that.
Yeah. The other stuff is just additional information that...it would be nice if we could get it out to people sooner, you know, overall.
When is it going to be ready for people if they want to come before town meeting and pick up a copy?
It's on the web, it'll be pulled...
Book and the...
Well, but what you said was there's going to be one available.
Right, there'll be a hard copy in each of those locations where...
But not for people to take home?
Oh, not for people to pick up.
But if somebody sits and looks through things and says, "Yeah, I'd really like one of these to take home and read," we'll make a couple copies to let people take. I guess I want to revisit...I'm listening to you, John, and I'm getting concerned thinking, we could conceivably, having this whole book out there with the best of intentions and saying, "We're going to be playing between these pages tonight," have somebody say, "Well, I noticed on this trend from two thousand and seventeen that it's thirty-seven dollars different than what I'm seeing in this warrant article." We could conceivably get a lot of that back and forth.
Yeah, yeah.
Should we have the book available as something that is available in advance of town meeting, but the night of town meeting have the warrant, which has the budget and the recommendations in it? Just limit it to those?
Well, let's ask the audience, okay?
Should we have the warrant available for the people now in the book at town meeting?
So Kathy, you're saying all of the budget stuff, all of the stuff that we're going to vote on at town meeting, make that available ahead of time in case people want to pick up a copy and go through what we're going to be discussing? And the other part becomes, you know...
I think you should have one full one, one full one on the website.
Well, that will be, okay? But there are lots of people that, number one, aren't going to know that it's out there, and number two, don't like that. They want a piece of paper that they can go through just the way that they're going to at town meeting, so...
We have a lot of people that come in the week before town meeting and want a copy of the warrant.
I know. So...
Conceivably, Sue, we could...
I think you could cut it apart.
Right, we can take the warrant, which includes the budget and the recommendations, right out of this document, and then have, you know, the deep dive on all the information for the people that are policy walks and want to know that stuff, but also have the action, the stuff that people are actually going to be playing with the night of the meeting. So we can make this book available online and with a couple of hard copies...
With the articles, you mean, too?
No, without the...have the warrant just be a standalone. This'll just be the backup book, and then there'll be the warrant, which includes the budget and the recommendations, also on the website as a companion PDF, but available, as Kathy's saying, tomorrow, so people have the budget and the warrant.
I want to make sure that we're all talking the same language. The warrant is the same as having all of the articles and the budget.
Correct.
Correct?
And the recommendations.
And the recommendations. Well, that's all in on the same page, okay? So, yeah, I agree with you, Kathy. I think that's what people look for ahead of time and expect ahead of time. So even if you play around with the pagination on that, you might want to just separate that out and have that published separately.
Looking at it, it's actually not a insignificant number of pages.
No, it's not.
It's the bulk of the book.
It's not.
The warrant and the budget is page seventeen, page sixteen to page seventy-seven. So I mean, it's...and the reason it's this way, John, by the way, is to try to get the budget info big enough for people to see. With as many years as is reasonable, but big enough to look at. Because if you turn it to portrait, it really...
Is there any particular reason that we can't have a couple hundred of these done up and made available?
No, we would just beg people to bring them to town meeting if they take them down in advance. I mean, we're going to printers within the next day or so to determine, by going and reaching out to printers, saying, "This will be have, get a price." We're not going to try to do the super machines in-house because they'll die, you know, walk off, he said.
And then we'll be asking for a new printer?
So, yeah, we can make, you know, fifty copies to have, you know, some at each of the locations we've talked about, that people can take.
I think it's something we probably have to play around with and sort of keep trying to figure out what's the town prefer, or the town...I would, myself, I would, I'd like to get the budget book and all the information that you're providing, Jim, with that as one thing, and the warrant articles and the budget as a separate thing.
I think that's a good idea.
And then, you know, some people will come in and they just want the warrant articles and the budget, you know? They want to get the other book, that's fine, but...
I think people can't really expect printed...
Printed warrant articles.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, they're not expecting all the other good information, something that they can read at a later date, I guess.
Which is not particularly germane, just on the fly that night.
I don't know if it's...
I mean, there are geeks.
Guys, what do you think is the best?
There are a few of us who really do like to look at all of that other stuff, but...
Sue had this for less than forty-five minutes and found four hours ago.
I'm sorry.
No, it's good.
I just...but there are other people that are just as geeky in terms of that, so...
I think the majority of the people aren't expecting all of that because we've never had all of that.
That's right. So maybe starting with two different documents is a good way to...
And then blend it together, it'll...
Yeah.
Yeah. Because I have a feeling that people that come into my office, they just want the warrant.
Right, they don't want this whole book.
Right.
And we've heard from some people that, "What a waste of my money that you're making all of those books that people are just going to use the middle section of and then throw
Well, then, it sounds like we know that the important part for town meeting is that...
I'll break it apart, and we'll have the warrants, and we'll have the book available as reference people between now and town meeting, and we'll have the warrant available between now and town meeting and at town meeting.
And it's only on two things.
One thing I'd like to mention before we have the actual town meeting is Les. I'm not sure if it was Les special or if it was Les angle, but someone in the audience moved to table an article, and I know there was a...maybe I'll try to address it at the beginning of the meeting, because I think it was maybe some folks who weren't familiar with our practices, that we're not going to take in the act, we just move to take no action. And tabling something is...
Putting it on the table for later.
Putting it on the table just for the night, I see it. Because if it doesn't get enacted by the end of the meeting...
Dissolves.
It's...the meeting dissolves, we can't do it again without a new article. So maybe I should explain that to people that aren't familiar with our powers.
And it's in the guide.
Yeah, yeah.
Nothing bad, I mean, you do cover it pretty well there.
If this should go two nights, when we're looking at, we discuss this early.
If this should go two nights, we have a problem with the board of selectmen. Selectman Klein is not going to be at town meeting, he has a previous, long-ago reservation.
Make a tough commute to come back.
Yes, very tough to come back from across the ocean. And Wayne...
Changed things to be available for the town meeting.
On Tuesday.
On Tuesday, but he's leaving Wednesday morning, oh, God, thirty.
I see that. Well, why are you back, though?
I'm gone for two weeks.
About that long.
The following week, the thirteenth, November the thirteenth, right? I'm likely going to be screwed, field trip in DC.
And I'm going to be leaving on the fifteenth, so...
So we've got to either get it done...
So we're going to get this done.
Get it done, or...
Most people want to get it done anyway.
The only thing I can think of though is that we have just some articles that just don't quite make it. I don't think, I could be wrong, but I don't think there is a legal requirement of the selectmen to have majority of their members there.
No.
The legal suit is a lone wolf, I guess, or like that.
Typically, what we do is we meet prior to figure out who's doing what in terms of reading our articles at least, and then we adjourn to the town meeting. It's usually us that vote, that make the motion to go into the town meeting.
I understand that that's general practice and that's...
But we don't have to?
I agree, because I got asked the question yesterday, and was doing a bit of research on it. And there's nothing in chapter thirty-nine that obligates, it indicates that the warrant is called at the hands of the selectmen, which is done by virtue of proxy, but in terms of the actual town meeting itself, there's nothing that I found in the statute to require a quorum or a selective to be present.
There you go.
It would become a problem if there was a prerequisite, prerequisite for a particular article, that there be a recommendation by the selectmen that you don't have a quorum to make the recommendation. But I understand that's not the case with respect to any of these articles, so...
I hope that we get it done Tuesday night.
Is that Tuesday, Thursday, or...
I guess I would say Thursday.
Well, that's up to you. I can do whatever, but...
I mean, because otherwise, we'd be going Tuesday.
Is that something you usually ask the town meeting?
No, I think we usually, the selectmen and administrator and...
I'm good, you can decide then.
...town clerk and what the facilities are will...
You decide.
...make a decision about where we go.
How about you and Kathy decide, and I just go along with it?
I'm sure we work out...
Just tell me where to be and when.
I listen to this Thursday, just so that we, at least all of us here, know, you know, when it's...what's the plan?
Okay.
And I can announce it at the town meeting, so that if we don't make it through Tuesday night, let people know. We expect that it will continue to Thursday.
Okay. That work for you, Kathy?
Yeah, Thursday works.
I would mention that upfront. I'd let people think we're trying to get through it all.
Yeah.
They usually do anyway.
Yeah, yeah.
They usually do.
I mean, usually, I think if people have a sense that, you know, we're going to push through for another fifteen minutes even though it's getting late to get it done, they'd rather do that than to come out another night. But, you know...
Well, I think also, if anybody watches, with the marijuana questions, a lot of those questions were answered tonight as far as the passing, not passing, and the whole thing. So maybe that will cut down on some of the audience questions.
And if the plastic bag article gets pulled in favor of working on a regulation, that cuts off the end of that. If the other two articles are something after your research, you think might be not in order, maybe that can even be addressed to the petitioners in advance.
Yeah.
So there's not the need to even go through the machinations practically there.
Efficiency.
I have my counters that I remember going through two years. So you can...
But you need to get them during the...
Yeah, yeah, that's true.
But we have counters all the time anyway, so...
Just take off, be right.
John, well, we have so many marijuana articles, whatever they're eight total, is the intention to discuss them collectively as opposed to article by article, or discuss the first seven, which are the individual bans, together and then discuss the regulations separately?
We've always done them separately. I mean, even though they're somewhat related in this case. I mean, I suppose we could discuss it generally, but I don't know if that would get people confused, because some people would be talking about recreational marijuana, retail, and other people would be talking about cultivation, and I think it might be better to stick to the article.
I think you have to do it separately.
And if someone starts talking about retail marijuana, we're talking about cultivation, just say that...
Especially if you see the way that they voted at the poll. There were some that were clearly...
Yeah.
They were clearly yes, okay? There were others that were kind of more even.
Yeah.
The planning board is supposed to make a report. Can they make a report that is, that includes all of them? Or do they have to make a report for each one? What will the AG accept?
So they need to make, whether they conduct it into a single document, and they call it a report with recommendations, or they prepare eight separate documents, they need to report on each of the warrant articles. And they've noticed the public hearing, they can do it in the form of one document, this is the conducted public hearing on all eight articles, and we report favorably all of them and recommend adoption at town meeting, that would be sufficient for the attorney general.
Okay.
But they need to clarify that that report contains each of the eight individual articles.
Okay.
They could do that at the first one. They wouldn't have to reiterate the report each article.
And that's the only reason I asked the question, my sense of it. I understand that there is a distinct difference substantively between a marijuana cultivation facility and a marijuana retail establishment, but in terms of the procedure of it, you're going to end up in the context of the first warrant article discussing, all right, so there was a valid vote, the valid vote was in favor of the ban, it needs to be paired with a two-thirds vote on this article. This article is very simple, it simply adds this particular use into the bylaw and then prohibits it across the board. And then I guess when you get to the next article, if you're not taking them collectively, you can just say, "This does the same thing for retailers, this does the same thing for testing facilities, this does the same thing for cultivators."
Do you think I should give a little preview, a recitation of that, or are people going to be knowledgeable enough that I just have to vote?
I wouldn't count on it. I mean, we...
I would. I would have them.
No, no, I mean, I wouldn't count on people knowing.
Some people are confused with the yes being...
And there will be people at town meeting that weren't able to go to the poll or weren't...
Right, right.
Did not go. I mean, what'd you get, nine-something?
Nine-fifty.
Very small turnout. Not that we get huge turnouts necessarily at town meeting, but it may be different people, so... Are we all set? Okay, thank you all for coming. Thank you.
Well, thanks for having us.
Thank you. I think this is the first time, at least, I've ever done this, and I know many towns will do a, I think, maybe call it a mock town meeting.
Mock meeting.
Yeah, it's kind of like, oh, because I was thinking, oh, God, we're not going to do it again.
Right, right. Just have it run through.
It's a review.
It's more like a review of the article.
So do I make a motion?
I make a motion that we adjourn at 8:52.
I'll second that. All those in favor?